I'd like to call the June 21st, 2016 McHenry School District 15 Board of Education meeting to order. We have a roll call please.
We do ma'am.
Mr. Santa Padre would you please lead us through the march?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Wait, Dr. Wright's ready on? Hold on.
They're on.
Okay.
Take your time. Take your time.
Thank you, Dr. Nicholas. Okay, just a reminder that we have about a two-minute limit, so I would invite Joyce Story, did I say that right? If you would like to speak.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, as I know draw here because we care for it and all of us here. I would like to address the proposal that's given by Eric Cybersen to all some of the local councils concerning protecting students' rights. Although I do not object, according to the proposal, to a gender-neutral, single-use bathroom or locker room. I do object to the gender-neutral bathrooms that students will be forced to go into based on safety, personal concerns. I believe a private locker room and a private bathroom is acceptable, especially for those who are struggling with their gender identity. But to force all the students to use a gender-neutral bathroom or locker room is a recipe for disaster, especially down into the future. Most students will feel unsafe sharing these facilities with the opposite sex. In other words, those struggling with gender identity, and they feel unsafe sharing these facilities with the opposite sex, those who are biologically of a different sex when they were born. I think it is a win-win if we accept the policy headings. The biological gender you were born with should remain the boys' bathroom, girls' bathroom, boys' locker room, girls' locker room, to make it safe for everyone, not just those who are not struggling, who understand, but also for those who are struggling and don't even know who they are as a person. We need to protect them. So I think keeping our bathrooms a safe place, gender, not neutral, but in what the biological gender is, male or female, and then if you have a facility, whatever, even if you have to build one, I think it's worth the cost of single-use room for these processes. Thank you.
Thanks Joyce. Chloe Hawke.
I too, basically, I agree with everything that Joyce just said. I have a daughter who is going into fourth grade this year, and this is a really big concern going forward, more so going into junior high and high school. And I know from talking with a number of other parents who have children in District 15 who couldn't be here tonight, a lot of parents are really concerned about this and also agree that, again, everything that Joyce said and that if there are students that are dealing with gender identity issues, that they need to have a separate area where they can feel safe and use the washroom and locker room and all that and the other kinds of things.
Thank you.
Linda, it was right, you probably can't even read it, that was right.
Hadley, what's blessing?
Hadley, H-A-D-L-E-Y.
Thank you.
I agree with what Joyce said. I'd like you to accept Eric's proposal as is. The fact that we are even thinking about allowing opposite sex gender, even if they are confused, into a bathroom with other kids is just, doesn't make any sense to me at all. So, I agree with what Joyce said and I agree that with the proposal that Eric is making. And I would ask that you would consider it. Thank you. And thank you for serving. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Josh Timmons, did I say that right?
Perfect. So, I'm gonna keep echoing on the feedback right here. So, but as I'm thinking through, you know, the issue, the hard thing with having mandatory, I'm gonna just, for lack of a better term, having an open restroom is actually a requirement for every single young person to be prepared and able to deal with seeing someone of the opposite biological, you know, person. And so, every person would have to be prepared and able to deal with that. Even as adults, we have indecent exposure laws because it's hard to deal with. And we're expecting our minors to all be 100% able to do this if the bathrooms were open. And my second concern is actually for teachers, volunteers, faculty, and all, I've got three children and one that's coming in less than a month. So, but also for our teachers. My sister-in-law's a teacher in Missouri, and I've got some of the insides on what teachers have to do and have looking out for students. And to have a teacher put in a position where they may be observing someone from opposite genders in a mixed setting like that, it could be damaging to our teachers. And if our teachers aren't 100% prepared, and if it leads them into further addictions or trouble, I would imagine even the school could be liable for having required them to be in a situation to oversee things like that. So I would agree and hope that we would be able to keep our bathrooms biologically based rather than the social construct of what you feel your gender is.
Thanks. Thank you. And Neil Lindwall.
Yes, thank you. I too am here to speak in favor of the resolution. Born and raised here, I would say probably no one on this committee even five years ago would ever be guessing that we would be here trying to figure out and speak to this issue. I think we have a situation where our policies and even culture is moving faster than our ethics, faster than our ability to even vet these issues. How is it that if the bathroom is open to whoever feels a particular gender, how do you vet that and make sure that our students are safe? So I have a daughter, she will be a junior this year at West Campus, and as a father, I'm concerned about her safety. And so, I'm here speaking primarily as a father concerned for the safety of students. And so, I ask you to think about it in that manner. This is not about cultural wars, this is not about even issues of faith so much for me as it is an issue of safety. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you everyone for coming. Okay, we're gonna move on to the consent items. Mr. Cybersen, is there something that you wanted to pull from there?
A, B, and G.
A, B, and G. Okay. Can I have a motion for approval for consent item C, D, E, F, M, H?
Motion to approve, I second.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Guyer?
Yes.
Mr. Hutterman?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. Santa Padre?
Yes.
Mr. Cybersen?
Yes.
Okay, we might as well start with, move on down, can you start with A and just move down here?
Okay. On A, still approval minutes.
Yep.
Under the curriculum committee update, it says these policies will be placed in the next consent table for approval. That wasn't just presented. What was presented was that they would be discussed in the committee meeting this month along with the technology updates. So I would move to strike that sentence from the minutes.
Great.
I think we probably need to ask our administrator in charge of that committee what his recollection is in terms of what was discussed and moving forward.
I honestly don't recall how we closed that meeting, but I do think our practice has always been, we read them at a committee meeting and at the next board meeting it is consent agenda. I think that's been the practice that we followed for at least the years I've been involved in these committees.
I believe that Dr. Nicholas, our attorney also, that that is really common, that we review it once and then at the second meeting we do a vote on that. Any other discussion on?
The, the issue at hand is whether that was what was presented in the curriculum committee update or not. I do have a video if anybody wants to dispute it, of the committee meeting. No, this is the minutes of the?
Of the board meeting.
Board meeting.
I think regardless, you know, if that's what was presented.
Well, I think we can strike it. Can we strike it?
Move to amend.
Well, the issue will be, do you want to still vote on those policies tonight?
Well, no, the question, the question, the question at hand is simply, is the minutes correctly required or not?
Okay.
And so, I move to amend the minutes.
Strike him.
Although, can you vote on one?
Mrs. Guyer?
I don't even, I didn't hear what sentence he was talking about, Seibstein.
Mr. Hutterman?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. Cybersen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Okay, on B, financial reports.
Well, then we need a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Okay.
I will make that motion.
Eric?
Second.
Abby?
Second. Yes.
Mr. Hutterman?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. Cybersen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Guyer?
Sure.
Okay, now we can move on to B, the financial reports. Eric?
I was questioning on page 26 of the financial reports what the expense for LEGO education was, and was wondering if that went out for bid, it's $71,120.22, and whether, whether that went out for bid and whether that was brought, why it wasn't brought as a proposal to the board before the money was spent.
LEGO is actually part of our, part of our innovation centers, is part of the material for that. It's a curricular material, much like a textbook. So we buy the product that we think is best. This is something that we've talked about for some time, and it's been proposed in the innovation centers and what we're doing. In the STEM labs, you see the presentations on that and approved all the bills. So that's all part of that project.
But was not part of the dollar amount approved?
Well, yeah, it would've been approved now.
But it wasn't part of the dollar amount approved in those projects and should've been brought to the board as a proposal for spending.
I recall, I believe there was money in the project for curriculum, if I'm not mistaken.
Which, one of the contractors was that going to, because it was all broken up by contract? None of the contractors listed under LEGO education?
But on the contractor, no.
It's curriculum, it's not contracted, it's curriculum, it's like a book.
But it's not just a book, it's $71,000 worth of?
Curriculum. It's not all Legos, it's curriculum, it's books, it's education, it's training to help educate our children and move them forward in the world.
And it might be a great curriculum, but?
It's not, it's not just a bucket, it's not just a bucket of Legos. I mean, there's LEGO shirt, but there's a bunch of other things that go with it, and there's software, and there's a whole curriculum program that goes with it. It's no different than if we do a textbook adoption to buy a math book or something of that nature.
But?
And this is really, and this is really not an adoption, this is tweaking the technology integration.
Are there any other comments from board, other board members?
Move to approve the financial statements.
I have two other.
What are the two others?
Protup decals for $10,989.22.
What are they?
On page 44.
I guess we're all searching for this.
I can't, I can tell you that that company, we buy a lot of things from them, like the 911 stickers on the telephones, for example. We actually changed our phone system. So I know one thing that we would've bought would've been the new stickers, so if you dial 911, you know what to dial. But we buy a lot of things like that from that company.
And then the other one was SoundDing on page 55. It's another $18,000, $18,650.56 to them. A couple of months ago, there was SoundDing that aired for a total of right around $50,000 that we were told was wireless mics for MMS. And then when we were at MMS for graduation, there was not wireless mics. It was the mics that we were told they were replacing. So what is this?
Well, if we approved this a couple of months ago, we may have ordered it, may not have installed it.
No, 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 we, we approved a bill several months ago.
No, I'm saying we may have bought the equipment, but we may not have put it in, we may have had our own guys do that. And that's something that we probably would've slotted over the summer.
And now, what is this next $18,000 worth?
I'd have to look at the exact bill.
Eric, here's the thing, I appreciate that you're interested in knowing about where district funds are being spent, I really do appreciate that. But I think you're putting Mark on the spot here without calling him ahead of time so that he could bring some of those invoices. I mean, you're kinda asking him on the spot, I mean, look at the number of bills here, and you're expecting him on the spot to know exactly what that's for. And I don't think that that's fair to Mark. So in, in the future and giving him some time to prepare to be able to answer your questions, I would ask that you could call Mark to tell him that these are the questions you have.
And when I give it to him, I do.
Okay, but as a board member, you're responsible to take five minutes and call him. I call every time I get one of these packets and there's things in here, you can ask Mark. I speak to him almost every time I get a packet, 'cause I have a question. Talked to Josh yesterday, talk to Cindy. When you have questions, you call.
Thanks, Mark. Do you have, just off the top of your head, can you answer?
A lot of the, regarding the sound systems, we have a bunch of equipment. Some of it's newer, some of it's older, and we have had a few issues in the schools where that's the one, the process of replacing that. It is a technology item, so obviously you wanna keep sort of similar things together. And when we do go out and buy these things, we do bid several quotes, so it's not a matter of just buying from whoever's closest or whatnot. So, I mean, we do go out and do that. And I know, an example on the, the SoundDing that we purchased before, I know there was a quote, there was a quote on this as well, so.
I wonder if we could wait till next meeting and you have all the information?
So you would like to delay paying bills for the month until we have more information because we didn't think to ask the questions in advance in order to actually have answers at this meeting?
Well, the bigger problem is when there's $20,000 worth of sound equipment being purchased. It should be extra information put in the packet or brought to the board before it's, before it's purchased, so that the board knows what we're going against.
And that's Eric Cybersen's opinion. Any other questions on the financing?
That's it.
That's it, okay. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'm second.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. Cybersen?
No.
Mrs. Davis?
No.
Mrs. Guyer?
Yes.
Mr. Hutterman?
Yes.
Okay, and then the last one, Jean, Eric approval of the board policy?
So, I was told at the committee meeting that the process would be, the committee would have two readings and then it would be brought to the board. The committee never voted to bring it as a motion to the board, so if that's their first reading, the committee should have voted to make a recommendation to the board for the approval of those changes. That was how it gone.
Eric, I served as the chairman of the curriculum committee, I can't tell you how many years I've done that. I've served on this board for well over 10 years, and that is not our precedent, that's not the way we work. And the way we work is exactly what we did. The policies go into curriculum, you get those policies ahead of the curriculum meeting so that you can do your due diligence to our community as their representative to go through that policy and be able to ask all your questions, to be able to understand that policy, so that you can come up to the full board and explain that to us. The next meeting then is when we vote on those. That has been our precedent since I have been on this board.
Okay. But, what I was told at that meeting was that it would be coming back to the committee for another reading, which is then when you would have a motion and a motion to make a recommendation. There was no motion to make a recommendation, so is? Do you have any issues with the policies? I have one issue with the policies, yes. Can we just go through what the policy issue is? It is, of the original policy, it was on page 5, I don't know where it's at, the one that's in the book. It's number 10 in the list of forbidden things.
Switch three.
Forbidden students.
Switch three.
Number 10, the last sentence of that. Currently, we don't have a board policy covering the same issues. We do at several of the schools have that in our student handbook, and in the student handbook, it just completely prohibits it, it doesn't make any exceptions, and I think that's the way we should leave it. So the, the way the policy is proposed, it says engaging in any sexual activity, including without limitation, offensive touching, sexual harassment, indecent exposure, including moving and sexual assault. This does not include the non-disruptive expression of gender or sexual orientation of preference or display of affection during non-instructional time. So currently, we have several schools that have a specific policy prohibiting displays of affection, regardless of what it is. And the way this policy is written is that if it's an expression of somebody's gender, they can moon or they can sexually harass, and that's, the policy is not bull written.
Can I ask where this policy came from?
This is a press policy.
Well, can you, can you expand upon it, what's a press policy?
Press policies, and Kim can elaborate too, that their policy is sent to us from an organization with timely updates on state and federal guidelines. And so, when we get updates from them, what they're saying is, these are the updates that your school district should make to your policy to make sure you are in compliance with state and federal laws.
Is it, so is it safe to assume that these policies are written by attorneys from?
They're not written by us.
Pardon?
They're not written by us.
They're sacred, yeah. Any other questions on this policy?
But it does say to have your school board attorney review it before we use it, and normally they have a note saying, you know, it applies to this Illinois compad statute or that one, or this federal law. That particular one does not.
Any other discussions, any other questions on this policy from other board members?
Hey, we said we need to check into it, Mark.
Okay.
Before we approve it.
Mr. Hutterman, any comments?
No.
Amanda?
No.
Okay.
You certainly don't want anything happening because we have policy, and then something really disastrous happens, I don't think that's what we want.
The floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Your second.
Oco, Spals, again, Mr. Cybersen?
No.
Mrs. Davis?
No.
Mrs. Guyer?
Yes.
Mr. Hutterman?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to business, super finance report. Dr. Hoffman?
Good evening, everyone, and thanks for coming out on such a beautiful summer evening. It's a shame to be inside, but we won't keep you here for long. Just a few brief items. District 15 Bill Burke Memorial Golf Outing was held on June 3rd at Moon Creek. Bill Burke was assistant superintendent for a number of years and also a principal at Landmark, came out of retirement to help us out, we really need to fill those spots. So a beloved administrator that served for many, many years, passed away a few years ago, and so we honor this golf outing by naming it after him. But it also raises money for our foundation, our education foundation, that provides extra materials for our students. Want to mention, we have a new director of transportation, his name is Jeff Sherman. He's busy reviewing routes and doing all those things in the summer, so we make sure that school gets off on the right foot come August. It's hard to believe, it's right around the corner, so we'll ask him to come by and meet the board probably that first week in school, he's not pulling his hair out, trying to make sure everything runs smoothly. Our next board of education meeting is here, again, at Central, July 26th, and that is at 7:30. That is all.
Any questions for Dr. Hoffman? Okay, moving on to B, the resolution protecting the rights of students. Eric?
I will make the motion to approve the resolution protecting the rights of students.
Is there a second?
I have a second, please.
Discussion?
Any discussion?
Can you explain the, can you explain why you think this is a resolution we should pass? Mr. Cybersen?
For the same reason that the public was here to comment tonight, to protect our Having separate bathrooms is a good policy. Also having facilities for those who are not comfortable with the, our current bathroom situation, I think is a good way to protect all of our students. And I think a lot of our schools already do have single occupancy bathrooms, don't they?
I certainly do, for sure. We get that.
Or it's private bathrooms.
We have some single bathrooms in other middle schools, and some of our elementary schools.
Okay, we have invited our attorney, Tom Mannler, to kind of give us some guidance into this resolution, and so, Tom, I'm gonna turn the floor over to you in terms of some guidance from you.
May I distribute?
Absolutely.
Now that I'm prepared? Okay. Motion to approve. Briefly summarize the memorandum, in the first place.
We might want to mention what group you're from.
Okay, I'm, my name is Tom Mannler, I'm a partner in the Chicago law firm, I'm with Sean Culbertson, we're general counsel of the board. Thank you. This, this resolution, I approve the resolution, and in my opinion, it's illegal. The United States Department of Education has determined that transgender students should be allowed to use the bathroom of the gender to which they identify, not requiring them to use the bathroom of their birth. If this resolution were passed, the district will be subjected to potential discrimination charges and certain litigation. We've seen just this last spring, that District 211, their friend high school, was sued by the American Civil Rights Union. After a very long, protracted federal court litigation, District 211 capitulated, and the student was allowed to use a bathroom of which the student identified as gender. It was a very expensive lawsuit, law school, law, excuse me, lawsuit. I would also suggest that if you were to pass this resolution, knowing that it's illegal, potentially illegal, I would think that the insurance company that ensures you against litigation could easily say to you that this is not covered, and in effect, you would be spending district resources, not insured resources, to defend yourself. So passing this resolution, I think, does disservice to the public and the taxpayers of unnecessarily spending district resources. If a student were to come to you and say that he or she was transgender and they wanted to use a bathroom of their identity, then you would individually accommodate that student rather than passing a resolution like this. I'd like to sum up by saying that FBI statistics indicate that about 20% of the hate crimes in the United States are gender-related, second only to race and greater than religious hate crimes. So this is an issue that is going to be confronting us for a long time. If anybody has any questions, I'm gonna try to answer.
I do have a question.
Summarize, summarize the memorandum, there are more details in the memo.
I do have a question for you. Mr. Mannler, the, can you talk about the cost of litigation? Would there any, would there be revenues? Also, would any revenues that we received be in jeopardy?
The Department of Education could hold up your federal funding.
Would the state of Illinois have anything to say about it?
They can file suit.
They don't pay us any money now anyways.
Mr. Bertolozzi, how much money do we receive from the federal and state government that would be at risk for policies, if we were to pass this policy based off of that?
This year, we received $2.2 million from the federal government and $10.7 million from the state for a total of $12.9 million.
Out of a, what's our total, what's our total budget, our total annual spending? Is it, it's about 70 million, I believe?
77 million this year, yeah.
So, if we were to do something like? So, if we were to do something like this, and those, and those revenues were to be...
What you're talking about, our expenses, actually are...
Well, no, I'm talking about our revenues.
Our revenues, yeah, our revenues are about, about $59, $60 million, you're talking about 18% of funding.
18%, 18% of our funding, which would then be forced to be placed upon the, what's left of our property taxpayers, correct?
Yes.
Any other questions for Mr. Manler?
So what does a person do, so do you get sued when a man, a boy, so he's a girl,
goes in there and physically abuses a girl, then what happens? Then, then you're still gonna get sued, because the parents are gonna say, I didn't want my, and you did it anyways. So you're gonna be stuck either way. And you're not keeping the kids safe, because if the kids go and they see something like that, and they're young, they're gonna be so upset, they're not gonna wanna go in a bathroom, and it's gonna affect their learning. So I know this, I've seen it happen before in a different school, and it's not safe. And if it was my kid, I wouldn't send him, go to a school that did that. My kids are older.
Any other questions for Mr. Manler?
There was a question in there, Mr. Manler, I think. Can you explain the difference in, from, you were gonna say something?
Yeah, there, there's a process that, that occurs normally in a situation like this. The parents of that student would approach the district and basically say they wanted to have a separate bathroom for that student. The district would attempt to accommodate that student on a one-on-one basis, which is what the district, what the law requires the district to do, and that student would probably be allowed to use a bathroom that is private for that student, a single-use bathroom, as opposed to a general bathroom. That's what happened in Front High School, that's the resolution that District 211 came to with the American Civil Liberties Union.
But they did all that ahead of time, ahead of getting in, before the state even stepped in, they did everything to accommodate that student.
No, they didn't.
He was on the girls' basketball team, or softball, whatever it was.
They didn't accommodate the bathroom until the litigation.
Is there, are there any more questions for Mr. Manler?
Yeah, how many districts in Illinois or in the nation have a similar resolution like this as part of their policy?
I'm not aware of any others. That doesn't mean there aren't any, but I'm not aware of any.
Any other questions for Mr. Manler?
So does that mean we have to talk to the president to maybe change his mind? Because you're affecting 90% of the population by doing that.
It isn't a resolution to change any policy, not be changing a policy, it would just be a resolution stating this is what we resolve.
Any other discussion on this resolution? Okay, we had a motion...
I do have, just one other comment that we, for those who aren't aware, this is a K-8 district, there is no high school involved in the district, so we don't wanna comment on that, because I think a couple of the public comments were regarding high school, schools, that's not this district. We're K-8, majority of our buildings do have single-use bathrooms, and then in fact, I know Landmark, for example, is all single-use bathrooms, there are no one-man bathrooms, and that's a K-5 building, that's just for comment.
Thank you. All right, so we've had a motion and a second, we have a roll call.
Hold on a second, so, in voting and passing this, or in voting for the resolution, a yes vote is to pass the resolution?
Correct.
And a no vote is to fail the resolution, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Roll call?
Mr. Cybertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
I'm against the vote, but wait, yeah.
I'm sorry, ma'am?
I said yes.
Yes. Mrs. Geyer?
No.
Mr. Hutterman?
No.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mrs. Pauls?
No.
Okay, we will move on to item C, closed session review, so we will take about five minutes. Thank you all for coming and speaking to us, it's really important that we do hear from, typically, there's no one in here during board meetings, so we do appreciate you coming. Thank you, we'll take about five minutes before we adjourn to close.
We have a motion to go to closed session.
We have a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Geyer?
Yes.
Mr. Hutterman?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. Cybertson?
No.
Do you want this?
Oh, okay.
Are you gonna be there?
Who's stopping too, is she that snarky?
Thanks for coming.
Thanks, Mr. Manler.
Appreciate it.
Okay, really listen to the next line here. Mike?
Mr. Mike? A question for us. They were on the chair.
Do I have a motion to approve the December 8, 2015 closed minutes for release, as well as the February 23, 2016 minutes with the correction? A motion to approve, to release those?
Some more.
Second.
Roll call, are we ready, Mr. Hutterman?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Geyer?
Yes.
Mr. Hutterman, yes, Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Pauls?
Yes.